Welcome everyone to our town council meeting. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation for God.
Thank you.
Councilor Jello Kristensen?
Here.
Mayor Krasinski?
Here.
Councilor Lanning?
Councilor Panenessa?
Here.
Councilor Rossel?
Councilor Yu and Igo?
Here.
Councilor Beach?
Here.
Mayor Hope Corn?
Thank you. Okay, we're on to our audience of citizens. If anyone here wishes to speak, now would be the time. We have some people that signed in. So you've got to call whoever's signed in.
Yeah, so Mayor Donna wants to speak. And then after Donna will be the Eagle Scout.
Okay.
You can go first.
Deal to the Eagle Scout first.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, if you could come up on the microphone here.
My name is Connor Yorski. I've come to get my Eagle project at Pistol Creek approved. It will be essentially a trailhead sign and a community board in form.
Oh nice.
It's gonna have a nice cork board for people to post things on that's community related as they walk through. So they'll be able to see. And it will have a custom map on there too of the area showing all the features of the small park.
Connor, are you replacing with the old sign that's there right now?
Uh, yes, that is the plan. It will have a large roof over it like a regular trailhead sign you see at most state parks. So it'll provide some rain protection. It will be put together with stainless steel brackets. So it won't fail or break apart like the old one there now. I'll be using pressure treated lumber. So it also degrades over time very slowly. I'll be working with a carpenter in New Britain to be building it and finding out the final dimensions to make sure everything is good. I have a customs ink sign. I think it's just like Sign Company or Sign Inc. in Berlin it's called. They will be providing the map. I will be putting some just little flowers or a little bush around the side and some paving stones underneath to connect up to the path.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions?
None.
What's your timeframe on it?
Uh, I'm going to be getting donations this month and meeting up to finalize the plans. And hopefully be getting the wood and start cutting it this month. I plan on assembling it end of this month and in August and then putting it in sometime end of August, beginning in September.
Oh, that's quick.
Wow, you're fast. That's great.
Delicious. That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, man. We're gonna, we will also just talk about it. We'll have a motion coming up when we get to our first agenda item. So discuss it a little bit more. But thank you. Any other questions? None? Thank you. And we will talk about it shortly.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks. Don. Welcome.
Thank you. So Donna Boe, 85 St. View Drive. Just here to further wish for your discussion on the proposed community and senior center tonight. Talk about hopefully setting up the advisory committee. We had two public forums. Attended okay, in all numbers, 25 to 30 people maybe. Some very good comments, some good questions, some ideas. And so I'm providing the town manager just with an updated bullet point that you might want to consider for the advisory committee. And it does include the why option as I discussed with the mayor. Has he, you know, talked to me about that? So that would be an option to consider and along with other options. So I just want to make sure that you're, you know, we're really gonna get going and we need that advisory committee set up. If you hope to have a referendum sometime next April.
Thanks, Pat.
And I can stick around if you need me to or cut up or something.
Up to you. So we're gonna talk about it under the manager's report unfortunately a little bit later. Sorry, it's a long agenda. But yeah, we're gonna talk about it. And then I think the next meeting, like I mentioned to you, we'll appoint the members. And then you guys can get started. There's, you know, there's a lot to do. And that was, you know, two good presentations, right? We have a third one coming up at the senior center July 20th. I think at 1:30, right?
1:00, 1:30, yep.
1:00, 1:30 for the seniors there. And then, you know, there'll be more obviously as it goes along. But there's a lot to look at, you know. We appreciate you helping out with all this. And yeah, there's all kind of stuff we gotta get done. And we've been delayed already with COVID. So we would have done this, you know, a year ago. But that's all right. Keep it moving. So thanks. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak at this point in time? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close that. Audience of citizens, we'll move on to our consent agenda with, we have 11 different topics. We've already reviewed them before. Transfer 206,000. I'm just gonna run through them really quickly just for the sake of the record here. 206,000 for over higher budgeted expenses and certain identified accounts that we reviewed. Money donations for the library. A couple of things we always approve when they're reviewing that. Well, they're gonna use Pistol Creek, the Burlington Department Annual Family Picnic. High School Booster Club to sell food and beverages during events during the 2021-22 school year. Pass the 2022 to sell food and beverages at Burlington High School events during the school year. Acceptance, the donation to the fishing brewery in the amount of $500 to the Burlington Park and Rec. That's coming up in, they were held already, I'm sorry, in April of 2021. The men swimming and diving came to sell food at Burlington High School events during the 2021-22 school year. Accept the donation to the deer operating count, $2,834. Accept the donation of $50 to the police cannon program. Accept the donation of $25 to the police peer support program. And accept the donation of $50 to the supplies expenditure account for the police department. So those are, that's on our consent agenda. And while we use them and are comfortable with them, we can go ahead and take a motion.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second, yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on that? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those? All right, so move. Thank you. On to our new business.
Thank you, Mr. Man. Good evening. First item on the agenda is a pool of deepest kind of project by Connor Yorski. Replace board at Pistol Creek walking area.
Yes, thank you. So we've heard about the project, Connor. And we certainly appreciate what you're gonna do. We have some of the outline here of what you're gonna do, what you just spoke about. And as always, you know, we're always very excited about our Eagle Scout projects, Girl Scout projects. It's just great, you know, great community service. And we look forward to it. So unless anyone has any questions, you explained it well. We appreciate that explanation. Go ahead and take a motion on this. Any questions for Connor?
Move to approve Connor Yorski Eagle project. Replace board at Pistol Creek walking area.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Vote? So move. Good luck. Thank you so much. And we look forward to seeing this project. Great?
Thank you. Item number two is to waive the bidding requirement and extend the employee benefits consultant contract for June 30th, 2022. And given that it's available.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good evening. Back in 2015, the town elected to go out to bid and rethink how we did the employee benefits consulting relationship. This covers health insurance and life insurance. The town retained USI as the consulting firm. And the same consultant has been with us now for five years. The town has saved considerable money. And Chris, who is the consultant, has provided a considerable amount of expertise. Last year, you agreed to extend that contract one additional year because we were in the midst of negotiating a multi-year agreement with Anthem for our health insurance. The intent was to go out to bid in the second half of FY '21. However, the process with Anthem and the health insurance renewal took longer than anticipated. And so we're now at the start of fiscal year '22. So we're asking for an additional waiver with the intent to go out to bid, not because we have any issues with Chris or USI. They've provided great service. But this will be the sixth year that we've been with this consultant. Health insurance costs in the neighborhood of $8 to $9 million between the town and Board of Ed. So we think it's prudent to go out to bid. But to ensure continuity while we do that, we're asking you for a waiver again for fiscal year '22.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Any questions for Kevin from the council? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
I move to waive the bidding process and renew the employee benefits contract. USI Insurance Services, the amount of $55,000 June 30th, 2022. This is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you, second on that?
Second, yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the council? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Close. Right, motion carries. Thank you, Kevin.
Item number three is a town meeting to appropriate $3,100,000 of the fiscal year '22 general fund, unassigned fund balance to fund the anticipated fine benefit pension payout. Kevin?
So if it feels like we just went through this, it's because we did. You approved about $2.2 million, I believe it was two meetings ago. And since that time, we've had two really good officers elect to retire. The money that you agreed to appropriate to meetings ago will be used to fund those retirements. And this request is to effectively replenish the fund. The pay as you go strategy that we've been employing for the last several years, we've tried to keep funded two potential retirements. And really, that's because the timing from retirement announcement to the time we actually have to pay the money out could be as short as four to six weeks depending on when someone elects to retire. In this case, they've elected to retire at the end of July. So we have a little more advance notice. However, we still have after these two retirements, five active members. We're also coming up on August when both the council and board of finance will not be meeting. So this request is to call for a town meeting and ask for a non-budget appropriation of $3.1 million so that we can maintain that balance in the event any of the remaining five elect to retire later in July so that we don't have to call an emergency meeting and appropriate funds to make sure we can honor that obligation.
Thanks. Yeah, we know we're coming up, I guess, quickly, maybe more quickly than we thought on the last few people left in the old defined benefit program. And fortunately or unfortunately, good for, I guess, the people that are remaining, they can get some nice payouts if they've been there for the many years they've been. That's just the deal that the town made many years ago with the people that were left on the pension plan. So have to do some of these transfers. We'll mention it, we mentioned it before. We mentioned at the public hearing that these are, unfortunately, need to be done this way due to the fact that the town did not fund it for many years. So hence, we're a little bit behind the eight ball with lump sum payments that we do need to make under our agreement. So but fortunately, we have the funding in our accounts to do that. So we're lucky in that regard. So any other questions for Delaney? If not, we'll take a motion. Hearing none, go ahead and motion on this.
Move to call a town meeting at 6:45 PM on July 20th, 2021. Approve fiscal year '22 non-budgeted appropriation of $3,100,000 in general fund, unassigned fund balance to the pension extraryal account, both in the general fund.
Second on that?
Second, yeah.
Any other comments or questions, council members? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Vote?
Thank you. Item number four is to authorize the town manager to sign the assignment agreement, tax needs and assignment. Purchase price $3,800 for property known as Zero Orchard Road. If we saw one of them, we'd need you, so Kevin, you're on.
Busy night, Kevin.
It is. The town has several, like many towns, several small, often oddly configured pieces of property that aren't, they're not buildable lots. They're just sort of small pieces of property that are owned by various people around town. This particular property is on Orchard Road. And the lady who owned the property paid her taxes to care of the property, but a few years ago passed away. In the meantime, the property has sat there. Taxes have not been paid. And the town was approached by the adjoining owner of the property where there is some value because it can be connected in with the existing property that's right next to it and offered to purchase this piece of property from the town for the outstanding taxes. And we're asking for approval to execute that as we believe that's in the best interest of the town.
Great, thanks, Kevin. Okay, it seems to make sense. Back taxes and property can move on. So any other questions for Kevin? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter an assignment agreement to secure delinquent taxes, the amount of $3,800. Benjamin Esco concerning property known as Zero Orchard Road.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none? Motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Close. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks.
Item number five is the opening of purchase orders for Burlington Memorial Library. So today, for the first time, we have a new library director that I want all of you to meet, Kim McCallik from Durham. I do say from West Durham, so.
From the Westender.
So we're thrilled to have you here and she's gonna walk you through. And I apologize, before the council meeting, we sort of had a little prank and told that new staff they'll have to sing in front of the council. I think that's why you spilled your drink there. So.
Oh, no.
I'm mortified.
You still have to sing.
Make sure nobody steps in there.
You still have to sing now.
I'm a terrible singer.
All right, Kim, it's up to you if you wanna just read to talk about.
Welcome. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too. I'm happy to be here.
Great.
So the Burlington Memorial Library belongs to two consortiums. First, the Connecticut Library Consortium, which is made up of 800 members in the state of Connecticut. And that large organization allows them to take advantage of purchasing power to buy things like media, books, movie licenses, things like that. And then we're also a member of the Library Connection Incorporated, which is a consortium of 30 libraries in Connecticut. And that membership allows us, among other things, to take advantage of the IT systems program that they have. And we don't have to employ an IT professional independently. So we are asking to waive the town's bidding procedures and approve issuing purchase orders for the '21-'22 fiscal year for the following vendors. So Baker &amp; Taylor for adult, child, and teen books. That's $66,500. We're also asking for Library Connection Incorporated dues, which is $55,000. That also covers data services, books, and supplies that we purchase for them. And then also for data services with Novus, which is $13,000. And then overdrive at $12,000. That covers our downloadable audiobooks, magazines, and ebooks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Questions for Kim?
Are these new consortiums that we belong to or have we? No, we have, we belong to them for a while, yes. I just, no, it's new. I just, I wasn't sure how much information you all remember from year to year. So I just wanted to provide the background for you. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to waive the town's bidding procedures and approve issuing purchase orders for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. For following vendors, to the libraries, participation in Connecticut Library Consortium and Library Connection Incorporated. Best discounts have already been provided. This is in the best interest of the town. Supplies and books, Baker &amp; Taylor Company for adult, children, and teen books, $66,500. Databases, books, supplies, data services, audiovisual, Library Connection Incorporated, $55,000. Network maintenance, data services, Novus, $13,000. Downloadable audiobooks, e-magazines, streaming video, overdrive, $12,000.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second, yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? Vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Close. And motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Thanks, Kim.
Item number six is the request to waive the bidding process for fleet pump services. Right, Delaney, want to hear you talk about it?
Skip over the war, my title there, so. Basically.
That'd be a sewer problem.
It wasn't a sewer, yeah.
Yeah, good, that's good.
Every year I buy at least one or two pumps. And we buy them from fleet, flight pumps, with very good pumps. This year, we're buying another one. Then we've asked for $45,000 because there's always a pump that goes out. We need emergency pumps frequently. This particular pump we're buying for Deming Road Pump Station. Our fellow have to go down there about 15 times a month to either replace or the E clock, one of the pumps. So we're hoping that we can put this particular pump, it's a submersible pump, in temporarily relieve some of the pressure on the other three pumps and bypass it. So if it works, it'll be great. If it doesn't work, we will take the pump out and use it at Middletown. So it's not gonna be a waste. We're always in need of another pump. So we're asking for a total of $45,000. But the pump is gonna be about $19,000.
That's right. So 15 times a month, you gotta.
With this particular last pump, that was 15 times, we had problems with each and every pump. Very rare because we have three pumps there. This is the pumping station that we're trying to replace with NBC. NBC has indicated that they will pay 60% of the repair cost. It's gonna be $2.5 million. Problem is, is that we're still negotiating a memorandum and skating with themselves. They're delaying. And I'm not quite sure why, but anyway, we're still working with them on that.
So when we do that, it'll be?
Well, that'll change a couple of things. It'll actually be raised so that basically that there won't be any pit. They won't have to attend to anything like that. And pumps are gonna be available and easy to get to. So that makes a big deal. $2.5 million should be, it'll be the first time. It's the second biggest station we have, the Burlington Turnpike one.
Yeah.
That should be done hopefully a couple of years after that.
Yeah. Great. Glad you're working on it. Any other questions for Ray? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion on this.
Move to waive the bidding requirements in the case of pump failure or needed repairs and approve airing fleet pump in service in the amount not to exceed $45,000 through December 31st, 2022. This is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Any other questions from the council? Hearing none? Motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Item number seven, to the authorization for hiring of HI consultants to increase the town's contract with New England Geo Systems LLC to prepare an affordable housing plan and conservation and development. And, Maureen? Always yours.
Thank you. I think Maureen was going to be at the ZBA meeting. So just to check, is Maureen on?
Maureen's there.
Maureen's there. You wanna lead, Maureen, and I'll follow?
Maureen, on you.
Go on, Maureen.
Sorry, thank you. I just got on, the meeting just ended. So thank you very much. Good timing. The plan is, any commission has been working to obtain a consultant for the required 10-year POCB, Plan of Conservation and Development Update, which is due September of 2023, and to write an affordable housing plan for the town, which is required to be completed for the summer of 2022. The town issued an RFQ, which included utilizing the town's GIS consultant for the related map work for these two plans to be developed. Three consultants submitted scopes of work with related fee proposals. We had a five-member interview panel interview all three firms and chose to bring a recommendation of FHI consultants to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The commission endorsed the selection at their June 17 meeting after hearing a presentation from the consultant. And are asking the recommendation to the town council for FHI to be selected as the town's consultant to prepare the Affordable Housing Plan and the Plan of Conservation and Development for a fee not to exceed $122,120 plus a $10,000 allowance for mapping by our current GIS consultant, New England Geo Systems. FHI will, as part of this work, also review our BTD, which is Burlington Turnpike Development Zone Regulations, and suggest possible modifications to that and identify other areas within the regulations that may be considered for amendments. The fee would be paid through a Plan of Conservation and Development Update account, which has been added to and growing yearly in anticipation of the costly POC update process. It'll be offset hopefully by an anticipated $15,000 grant for the Affordable Housing Plan that you may recall you authorized the town manager to apply for at your last meeting. Currently, that POC, the Plan of Development Update account has $97,019 in it, which is anticipated to cover the billing through the fiscal year. The anticipated balance, again, less the awarded grant funds, will be requested for the fiscal year '23 budget. Therefore, I request in the interest of the town that the, and to fulfill the state requirement, you will approve this request.
Hey, thanks, Maureen. Jim, you have any other?
I think, I think Maureen summarized it well. I would just say that one of the, one of the things that the committee and the commission liked about FHI was that it was a bit larger firm than the other two proposers. And they have a very, they proposed a very vigorous community participation process, which we haven't done in the last two plans. And with the changes that are occurring in the community and. and, you know, the changes in markets caused by COVID, it's a good time to really not only do a comprehensive plan, but also to do a lot of outreach to the community and kind of help, get help and guidance for the next ten year. So that's kind of one of the main reasons, I think, that they were selected.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Jim. Any questions for Maureen or Jim from the council?
You're talking about community involvement. Is there, you have like kind of an idea of what we're talking about? Are we asking questions of the community or them to, oh, survey something like that?
They'll be doing, they've proposed doing both surveys and then having a couple of community engagement events and/or public participation when we get to specific sections of the reg, of the Plan of Conservation and Development. For instance, there's a section on historic. There's a section on the resources of the town, including open spaces. There's a section on economic development and where they would then engage perhaps targeted groups as well.
Anyone else, any questions? Okay, go ahead and take a motion.
Move to select a FHI studio here in affordable housing plan, conservation, development, and to authorize the town manager to sign a contract with FHI Studio for a fee not to exceed one hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars to increase the town's contract with New England Geo Systems LLC by ten thousand dollars to provide mapping services for these projects. Be funded by the planned development of data count.
All right, thank you. Second on that?
I'll second that.
All right. Any other comments or questions? We vote. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Great. Thank you, Maureen.
Thanks, Maureen.
Very much. Thank you.
Item number eight, which is training ammunition. See if it's supposed to be on the line.
Good evening, everybody. I'm on. Just some housekeeping items for new fiscal year. Annually, we purchase ammunition for our firearms training. We're over the ten thousand dollar purchasing limit there, but we utilize Jerick Brothers. They're on state contracts. So we're just looking for approval to purchase the ammunition through them using that state contract.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Any questions, council? There are none? Go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve the purchase of ammunition from Jerick Brothers Incorporated, utilizing State of Connecticut contract number one nine P S X zero two two zero, for the amount not to exceed twelve thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
Any other comments or questions? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine, police department, police bomb, mandate bid waivers, purchase order tools.
So again, this is some housekeeping for our uniform and equipment allotments that our officers and staff are afforded per their CBAs. They get an annual amount per contract, and they're not required to spend it at certain, you know, vendors. Typically, they use our local uniform and equipment vendors, and it's hard to predict when they're going to go over, we're going to hit that ten thousand dollar threshold for each one of these vendors. So at the beginning of the year, it's become the practice to do this, get the approval for the purchase orders. It helps out our finance department issuing them. And the biggest component is we make sure that, you know, we stay within our budgeted about fifty-two thousand one hundred overall. So no purchase order is going to be issued that would exceed our budgeted amount there. So we're looking to waive the bidding procedures for the aforementioned uniform vendors.
All right, thanks, Chief. Any question, council? There are none? Go ahead and take a motion on this.
Move to waive the town's bidding procedures and approve issuing purchase orders in excess of ten thousand dollars altogether not to exceed the budgeted amount of fifty-two thousand, one hundred dollars to the following uniform vendors. Security Uniforms Incorporated, England Uniform, Connecticut Police Supply, laws, and Ricky Finn's, because this is in the best interest of the town.
All right, thank you. Second on that?
I'll second that.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number ten is a bid waiver for communication systems maintenance contract.
Chief.
So, yep, Utility Communications has been our police radio vendor since twenty twelve. They also were selected to do our upgrade project in twenty seventeen. As part of that project, they, they provide maintenance contract pricing for years two through five. The pricing just went over, again, the ten thousand dollar threshold. We're comfortable with utility. We feel it's a fair price. Our system's stable, and we'd like to continue using them. So we're looking for, again, a bid waiver to continue that relationship with utility.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Chief. Questions for Chief? There are none? Go ahead and take a motion.
Move to waive the town's bidding procedure and approve issuing the purchase order for Utility Communications Incorporated for an amount not to exceed ten thousand four hundred dollars. This is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
Any, any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote. So moved. Thank you. Item number eleven is a, it's for technology computer replacement. Back to you, President.
Okay, so in the twenty-two budget that was approved, we got funding to replace our in-house computers, seven, seven of them anyway. Detective, administrative personnel inside the building. We've worked with Winslow Technology for a very long time, and they, they're on state contract for pricing. So again, we're looking for approval to purchase the computers through Winslow using the state contract.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Any, any questions from the council or the chief? There are none? Go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve the purchase of computers from Winslow Technology Group LLC for an amount not to exceed eleven thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars using state contract one eight P S X zero two six four A G.
Second on that? Thanks. Welcome, Peter.
Thank you.
Glad you could make it. Sure glad to be here. Any other questions for the chief? There are none? Motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. All right, so moved. Thank you, Chief. Hey, Chief, while you're here, I can't, I can't let you go. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem, no problem.
I gotta ask you just for, how are we doing? I mean, obviously, there's been some, you know, serious issues in other local towns around us, Glastonbury, Simsbury lately with the, with the theft issue on mobile break-ins and thefts. Some shooting, I guess, some rounds are going towards residents, fortunately, in those towns. How are we doing here at Berlin?
Actually, you know what? Our officers are doing a fantastic job. We put a press release out before. I'm not sure if you saw it, but the other night, there was a crash on the Chamberlain Highway. Three-car crash. It was a stolen car. Four juveniles took off, and four individual officers located the four occupants, and we made an arrest in that case. Luckily, there was no serious injuries, but both of the other parties involved in the crash were injured. And then again, today, at eleven o'clock today on Webster Square Road, stolen car from Southbury. An alert citizen, an alert officer noticed them driving on a rim. One of the rims, the car was blown out, and they're driving around on it sparking. And, and again, a juvenile and adult were apprehended and arrested, you know, eleven o'clock, you know, this morning. So obviously, they were up to no good. They're in our town in stolen cars. So those, those two things are, especially the highlight of today, anyway. The Achilles' Rest did a fantastic job, today's arrest. And then overall, I would say we're stable, which is good. In June, our motor vehicle thefts remain the same. Theft from motor vehicles was down slightly. And overall, through June thirtieth, thefts from motor vehicles, the car break-ins, were down about seven percent, which is progress. It's good. We have more work to do. We know that, and we're continuing at it.
Chief, can I just ask, if it's rough each year, it's down seven percent from when?
Compared, so through June thirtieth of twenty twenty, for instance, we had a hundred and nine car break-ins. And this year, we're at one oh one through that same period. So that's down seven, seven percent about, which is, it's progress. It's down. That's where we want to keep going in that direction.
You guys are certainly doing a great job, and we, we as citizens appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, we thank you on driving around on a rim. It's probably going to be.
Yeah.
An interesting scenario, Chief, anyway, but I'm glad they were noticed and we're glad the action that you took. Appreciate it. All, all the officers probably know it's not an easy situation to combat under our state laws, and we appreciate it.
I'll make sure I share the council's comments with, with our staff.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Item number twelve, purchase auto parts and supplies from various vendors licensing State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services contract under the fiscal year twenty twenty one. Jim Silas is here to present the agenda. Jim?
Good evening.
Maureen?
Good. So this is just our annual request to go over ten thousand dollars for parts to different vendors. This year, we're looking at four vendors. We're looking at Napa, Advanced Auto, Fleet Pride, and Task A Ford for our parts. And as, as the, as in the past, our guys do a great job of making sure that we get the parts at the best cost, which allows us to keep our budget down. And these vendors, most of, most of them, all but one, have some type of contract either with the state or a national contract that we utilize when we purchase it.
Hey, yeah, thanks, Jim. We appreciate that. So there's no questions for Jim. We have a, we have a four motion on this one.
There's a third party call and.
Thanks.
Move to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies using Sourcewell Contract zero six two nine one six GPC from Napa Auto Parts, for the amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Second on that?
Second down.
Any questions on that? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. So moved.
Move to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies using above U.S. Communities Contract from Advanced Auto, for the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second on that?
Second down.
Any comments or questions from the council? There are none? But on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. So moved.
Move to waive the town's bidding procedures and approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies from Fleet Pride for the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. This is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
Any comments on this one? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Move to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies using the State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services contract number one six P S X zero zero six nine, Task A Ford, for the amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
All right, second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? All right. Motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. So moved. Thank you. Item number thirteen, purchase of six eighteen thousand mobile wheel lifts using the fleet garage. Jim?
So, the situation in the garage, obviously, with the fleet expanding and with their use of heavier trucks, the situation in the garage is we only have one heavy-duty lift. That lift will hold up to seventy thousand pounds, which sounds like a lot, but really not. It's probably, it's, well, it's a little more than one of our heavy trucks, heavy six-wheel dump trucks. But the problem is, is that that lift, even though we schedule it, there comes times when we end up with that lift tied up for a period of time due to repairs, due to parts availability, whatever it is. So what I would like to do is I would like to purchase a mobile lift that would, that would be able to lift up to a hundred and eighteen thousand pounds, which then would be able to go not only lift up our six-wheel dump trucks, but then lift up some of our heavier fire apparatus and put that in bay number four, although it is mobile, so it would be able to be moved to any, any bay in the garage and/or any other facility if we happen to have a problem down here and we have to move out. I do have some money in building renovations that was actually earmarked to do some renovating in the building, but when we went to do the building renovations, we found out because of the age of the building that with the renovations that we were going to do, it would cost a lot more than what we had. So I figure that this money's been sitting there. It'd probably be the better use of this money than sitting there and collect interest or, or however it sits and utilize it to enhance the operation of the garage and purchase these six mobile lifts.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate you, all the work you guys do there. We know you got a lot of work, a lot of maintenance to do and keep our fleet on the road. So that's, that's great. Any questions for Jim on this? Hey, Jim, a quick question for you, just out of curiosity. How, how we doing on getting parts? I know that seems to be a problem for a lot of people these days. Are we having the same issue everybody seems to be having?
I think everybody's in the same issue. There is, there is a huge problem with getting electronic parts. There's a huge problem with getting rubber parts in which, you know, it doesn't matter whether it's parts or new vehicles. We just can't get them. There's, there's not being, not being stripped over from where they're being made. The chip plant that actually made the chips for the vehicles burned down over there, and they haven't been able to replace it or recoup from it, and it's just driving us all nuts.
Yeah, and that, I think that plant supplied to Ford, right?
Yes, it did. And that's, that's one of the, well, not only Ford. If we, a few of the vendors, even, even the Dodge that you approved for purchase two meetings ago, when I asked for a, a delivery time, they couldn't even give me a delivery time on that. They said they have no idea at this point.
That's, that's terrible. Yeah.
Jim, have you considered using used parts?
We use used parts from, from local. It depends on what they're going in, but yes, we use used parts from somebody in the local junkyard or suppliers. We buy parts online. We go just about anywhere we can, depending on what they are and what, what they're going in.
Corona's is a good, pretty good source for trucks, though.
Yep. And then we use Cameradas for some of the heavier used parts, things like that, yeah.
Thanks. Quite the problem for everyone.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for that update. Appreciate that.
So this, this lift, this lift will allow us to pick up our tandem axle trucks, which we can, cannot pick up with our current lift. We can only pick up single-axle rear trucks. So things like the tanker, the aerial pieces, trucks like that, we are, we can't get off the ground. This will enhance us and allow us to do that.
Great. I appreciate the hard work you guys. I appreciate the hard work you guys do down there at the garage. It's not always easy work, so we appreciate it. So uh no, if there's no more questions for Jim, we'll go ahead and uh take a motion. I guess we had two motions here separately.
Move to transfer fund seventy thousand dollars of building renovation into shop equipment for the purchase of forward lift six eighteen thousand pound capacity mobile column wets and safety supports.
Second on that?
Second, yeah.
Uh, if there are no more questions for Jim on this motion, uh go ahead and vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Number two.
Move to purchase six forward lift eighteen thousand pound capacity mobile column wets, safety supports from Vehicle Service Group, Madison, Indiana. These are sold through a local dealer Viking Garage Equipment utilizing Connecticut EAS Contract. One seven P S X zero zero seven four remount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars.
Second on that? Uh, no further comments. Go ahead and vote on this motion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Close. So move.
Item number fourteen is additional part for the purchase. One used car land for the facilities department. Jim.
Okay, so this this uh feeds right into your last question to me. There is no new vehicles out there. There is no used vehicles out there. In fact, if you have purchased a you, a new vehicle in the last two years, it is probably worth more now than when you purchased it. How's that?
That's good. Don't rush out and sell except for the cars, but that's okay.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, it hurt us. Uh, you did give me some money to purchase a used van. Um the used van market, I used to be able to buy a used van for twenty thousand dollars. Now I can't touch one for twenty-eight thousand dollars, which is just nuts. Um, I went and got prices on a brand-new van, um but then again, they told me that we have no idea when we can even deliver it to you. Um, so what I like to do is I I have some money in a vehicle reserve account. I'd like to add the extra ten thousand dollars to it, which will give me thirty thousand dollars. And then I would like to uh, you know, probably go down to a local vendor um and purchase a used, a good used van that just came off a lease, hopefully uh somewhere with ten to fifteen thousand miles on it and still have some warranty and get the facilities department a vehicle for them to use.
Hey, nice. Okay, uh, any questions for Jim? Now go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve the purchase of a used cargo beam for the facilities department. Remount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Approval of the town manager.
Second on that?
Second, yeah.
Thank you. There's no further questions. Go ahead and uh vote on the motion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Uh, so move.
Thank you. Final one. Item number fifteen is appropriate twenty-seven thousand five hundred to repair the cab on rescue number one. Jim.
Rescue one is the uh town's heavy rescue truck located in the Eastboro Firehouse. It is a two thousand eight vintage truck. It is not scheduled to be replaced to two thousand twenty-eight. Um, the operators of the truck reported that it had a water leak coming down the headliner and by the overhead console. So it was brought into the garage and it was discovered that there is a crack in the roof that's running lateral across the roof behind the light bar. We took it to some vendors that uh we trust in doing heavy-duty work. Um, we selected Turnpike Motors to do it. They're the ones that have the most uh experience in any of this. And what the repair is going to entitle, it's going to re- entitled stripping the cab, exterior, the lights, the antennas, the wiring, the the paint and everything else, and stripping the interior, which includes the complete seats and the headliner and all that stuff. Then they're going to uh reinforce the roof. Probably has a cracked support in there. And then they're going to uh repair or reskin the roof and then repaint and reassemble a complete truck. Is there's no going after the manufacturer. The manufacturer is out of business, uh went out of business shortly after we received this piece of equipment. There's no spare cab or anything that we put on it. Uh, we figure that this is our best group to uh to repair this vehicle.
Okay, well, it sounds like it's good. We can repair it, right? Uh, any questions for you? Yeah?
Is that still Doug Fernandez?
Repeat that.
Is that at Turnpike? Is that Dougie Fernandez still?
Yes. Yes.
Thanks.
Um, and and he he's really the only one around that touches heavy trucks. Uh, he has the spray boots. He has the technology to take care of the aluminum in those cabs. He's probably the best around and probably the only one that I would send a heavy truck to for repair.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jim? If not, we have a couple of uh motions here. Start with the first one.
Move to approve the transfer of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from account number zero zero one point zero five point zero five zero seven point zero point five three nine two seven eight zero 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 zero. Contingency for account number zero zero one point four five point four five six seven point zero point five nine six two two point zero 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 zero. Transfer to other funds to fund repair of M P number zero three two two.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, second on that? Do you remember those numbers? Uh, a- any questions for for Jim? Now we have to go on the motion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Close. So move to motion two.
Move to waive the purchase of the requirements and approve the Turnpike Motors of doing to Connecticut's repair. M P number zero three two two rescue one cab is outlined in their quote number zero three six two one zero 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 five five two remount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. This is in the best interest of the town. Second on that?
Second, yeah.
No further questions for Jim? Go ahead and uh vote on this motion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Close. Right, so move.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Good, Jim.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night.
Appointments. Got some appointments here, I see. Uh, what what happened? That's great.
Everybody wants to be on the V N A now.
Yeah, well, maybe it's not the
Brave souls.
Yeah, I was gonna say very brave of them. Yes, we're very happy, though. That's that's great.
And you received a new one today.
Oh, we did, another one? Oh, my goodness. So we have, we have enough. I guess, we have five here?
Yes.
Is there six? Six here? Five, right?
Five, yeah.
Oh, six, oh, wait.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and start with the nominations, the open the nominations and nominate our first candidate.
Like the nominee, excuse the noise.
B and A? B and A. All right, thank you. Uh, any other nominations for the spot? There are none? Go ahead and close the nomination. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. It's Lewis. Uh, second uh nomination for the second spot, B and A.
I would like to nominate Tom Rakowski. Are you in the board?
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Any other nominations for the spot? There are none? Go ahead and close the nominations. All in favor of Donna?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome, Donna. For three nomination for Berlin B and A.
I would like to nominate Emily Jensen.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other nominations for this spot? Hearing none, we'll enclose the nominations and all in favor of Emily?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, close. So move. Sorry, I didn't answer that last time. Uh, the fourth spot.
I would like to nominate Cindy Ferrara. B and A board.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other nominations for this spot? Hearing none, close the nominations. All is in favor of Ms. Ferreira?
Aye.
Close. All right, welcome. Final B and A.
I would like to nominate Kara Strokes.
Very much. Any other nominations for this spot? There are none? Close the nominations. All is in favor of this nominee?
Aye.
Close. So move. Welcome all. Thank you very much for kind of volunteering. Okay, we got enough. Town manager to report.
That's me.
Yeah, wow. Lucky you.
Pretty rare.
Wow.
All those are Jim items.
Well, we're quick tonight.
Quick. All right, so I have a few items, you know, I'll save some of them for the rent in a while later. So the call is started with the senior center community center. And Ms. Boway had uh an attachment. She nailed for me senior package. Hopefully, you had a chance to look at it. It's a two-page document, sort of outlines the first page, they have the whole process. Then there's a second page uh that is subcommittee task. Discuss this with the mayor before nominating any names. He thought we'll be able to discuss this with the town council. So it's coming back to you for the session.
Sure. So, yeah, no, I mean, we we've talked about this before. I think it's a good uh good thing that we do. Um so I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about it and I have Donna and whoever we nominate. Uh, I I think it's great because it's a, it is a, you know, very large project, near and dear to all of our hearts to finally maybe get something for Berlin, which would be wonderful. As we've all, many of us have grown up here and heard about this many, many, many times in the past, so we're hoping to make this uh this attempt successful in some way. I I I think we can do it. We're together. Um, and it's a, it's a big job and and we appreciate that people will volunteer to help out. And I know there's a lot, we know there's a lot to look at. There's a lot of different options we have, but you know, we, like we said, we've had the two conceptual uh plan meetings for for the public with the, you know, with the architect and one more to go. And there'll be obviously more down the road and there'll be some more with with this uh subcommittee as well. Um, and we're we're kind of looking upon this, Donna. I know we've talked about it a little bit and erosion. All of us here open for discussion. It's it's advisory only, um you know, to to the council. Help us out with all the information to look at and and, you know, come to us with frequent reports, obviously. And um, you know, we we can, as we go, we can talk about, you know, what what you, what what the committee is doing and what other um questions as we go forward that the council members may have and and the public as well, obviously. So we're always looking for more uh input from the public and any other stakeholders, of which there are many in town. It's a lot of us, well, hopefully get to use this community center, senior center, whatever, whatever we come up with, so. But maybe come up with a, I I do say I'd like to get a couple of council members, uh, if they're interested. Brendan told me he was interested. Someone up here or Joanne or Mike's interested. I think Mike's interested, okay? So that'd be a couple. We'll we'll go forward with that and then we'll just make sure we kind of talk about a few other names here. I don't want to make it too un- unwieldy. But again, you know, it's just really to discuss and I know in some formal discussions, Donna Boway as well, um, you know, probably take some visits. There's some in the area that are new. Some are a little bit different than what we have, but again, you know, we're just trying to gather all the information. Again, a little bit behind because of COVID. We couldn't really do a lot of this. This was planned for last year, but all right, we're here now and we'll we'll get it done. So so what we'll do is if we can, next time, just we'll kind of flesh out the names a little bit of roach with some with some of these uh members uh which, you know, we can talk about and just make sure, I mean, I don't know how many people. We've got four there. I see. So many. I have a couple, a couple that I wanted to put somebody to the Board of Finance on. I'm interested, so. Come up with a number, like get some names, and then next, our next meeting, we can appoint the commission and yeah, yeah, get you guys going. Uh, again, we appreciate it. And like I say, we look forward to the the reports and uh guide us into what, you know, what the actual plan will be. We have a good conceptual plan. I just, I just worry that if we don't look at every option and make sure it's the best plan, put forward to a referendum at some point. You know, we want to get this done. We don't want to get to a referendum and it's, you know, either not what the community wants or we all know there's a price tag on it as well, which now stands probably around forty million dollars. Um, and we're going to get, I guess, also write some information about taxes and what that means. And we also need the carrying costs. Obviously, there's three pools, two large pools, one a little bit sized and and a smaller pool. And there's a small um therapy pool as well as the gym, so, you know, there's, there's a lot of unique parts in this particular building. And uh, you know, we want to make sure we get the best thing that goes forward to the voters so they can make the ultimate decision. Because they are the ultimate, you know, decision makers in the town. And but we want to make sure they know what what's there, what it's going to be and how much it's going to cost us in for years to come. So we've got to get all that information before we go forward, so. What do you guys think? Council members, any of you think? Yeah, oh, yeah. No, I mean, it's good. We're we're on it and uh
Maybe it's premature, but I'd like to commission to look at savings that this might give us too. Maybe we want to close our oldest pool. Of course, we wouldn't need the senior center if we have a known, I mean, it wouldn't be all negative. We have some savings on the other side.
Right. Yeah, that that that's a good idea. I think we talked about a little bit about that in one of the public hearings recently, that, you know, we can recognize there'll be costs to closing down the community center we have now that would shift to the library, so that'd be still some cost to the town. And then also the uh the senior center. I think the assumption with the senior center is we close it, maybe they could add some housing there. Housing authority could add some housing. Let's discuss. And maybe, uh, we'd like to see that, uh, utilize that space. But these are all, you know, parts of the discussion that I don't think anyone really has talked about yet. And I think it's important that, you know, as we go, have some more public hearings and get this out there so everyone is fully informed with with every option. And, you know, hopefully we can narrow it down to whatever gets to the uh to the referendum, uh, that it's a, that's a good one, so. It's a good issue. Okay, so we'll go ahead and uh get some names and and we'll put it on the agenda for next time and and get and vote the commission forward and you guys can get started after that. So, yeah, corrode.
Yeah, fine. Yes.
Absolutely.
Next week, I'll be preparing the agenda for this. And I just want to make sure that all of you are comfortable with the subcommittee task, because if you're charging a committee, you want to be uh clear about what their task is. And I mean, I could, I could reference this document as an attachment and say, this is what the council is charging this subcommittee. I just want to make sure that all of you read it and you're comfortable with it, so that when the agenda comes to the council, they're not surprised. It's that's one. The second one is, as far as names, we have two now. Donna, obviously, you are part of it, and Barbara, that's for serve on it. There are three staff members that's by, two council members, they get to serve them, one from the Board of Finance, that'll be eight. And of course, on a, on a not to have as permanent members, but if you need some expertise, they'll consult the P D or the the finance department and other groups. They don't have to be permanent members of that. Obviously, if you're going to calculate cost and savings and impact on mill rate, our next department would have to be more, you know, better idea of the bid service schedule, when things I want to, you know, go down, you know, if you take something offline, the salary, savings, et cetera. But they'll be more than happy to be part of that exercise in its, in its time.
Yes, I I, can I talk?
Yes.
It's it's um
Donna, you know, you know what? You know, we got to, you know. Come on, you know the drill better than anybody. You try and slip it in. We could be You try and slip it in, we can be critical.
You know, we, we need doers, right? We need people that are wanting to get out there, visit other towns, lessons learned, seeing how things operate. We don't, you know, our, our current staff hasn't operated such facility like this. And so, you know, they need to learn, they need to be part of it. So, you know, however it's structured, we need the, the staff very involved. And of course, finance, always, well, that, that's, that's fine. And another suggestion that I would have is that you at least name one, I'll say citizen, someone that's not involved in the commissions, now maybe, maybe, I don't want, I don't think too many people on this advisory committee, you know, you can have too many people and not get anything done. But, you know, a name that comes to mind is Tim Thurston. We spoke at both meetings, it's just something to consider for you guys. He would involve.
Is he willing?
I'm sure he would be willing, yep. He was involved back in nineteen ninety-nine when this thing was first proposed, was on some subcommittees at that time. In fact, there are records somewhere in the town, I'm not sure where they would be, but those would be helpful to pull out. They did a survey at that time, they, you know, citizens to see is their interest. Of course, that's thirty years ago, I know twenty years ago, but, you know, according to ten, seventy percent of the town want them, so, anyway, I just throw that out. There's, there's a lot to get done and as long as people are willing to take assigned rules and take on some responsibility to get things done, you know, we can make it work. As far as reports back to the council, the advisory, I totally agree, but I do think the town needs to communicate this a lot better. There was a comment made at the last session. People don't know about this and I don't fault anybody because I know, I know we try our best. There was a good article in the Herald about the two meetings. But we do need to, to tackle this thing, to get it out. I've talked to people and they're like, I didn't know that was going on. You know.
That always seems to be like our biggest challenge in this town, is how, how do you disseminate information? I mean, it's on the website, it's, you know, publicized, it's in the newspaper, it's, you know, that seems to be like definitely one of our biggest challenges. Do you have any ideas as to how?
Well, I, I actually, I wrote letters to the editor of the Herald and the Citizen, neither of them published the Citizen said, ah, well, you know, we got a couple of other things that we're looking at. Of course, there's short staff and the reporter wanted a Zoom meeting so that she wouldn't have to come because she was working on some other things. So it's, it's gonna be a challenge, but whoever I would look to is, you know, some technology help. And again, on Facebook, I would recommend having a sole page for Berlin dedicated to this proposal. Yep, it's thirty, thirty-five million plus operating costs, so get it out there, Twitter, Instagram, you know, everything. Just publicize it and talk, 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 talk. I've talked, I've talked. But there's, there's just so many. And Barbara Gompats will tell you the same thing even for the seniors, so, anyway.
So before, so the only thing I, I want to make sure that what would, I, I just want to make sure that I, I really don't, I, we'll see what the council thinks, but I, I don't think the committee here, since you're reporting on the council, I, I don't, I don't want the committee going out to the public with communications. I don't think that's a good way to handle this because I think you're gonna have, you got, we're already talking eight or nine, maybe ten, you know, the committee's growing and everybody's gonna have their own thoughts, I'm sure. But I, I, I don't think, I don't, you know, I don't want the committee to report directly to the public. I think you got to go through the council to, put around the town website, town Facebook page, we got to do a different Facebook page, we can. But, and it'll be in a public meeting and, you know, of course, when, when you report to us and your meetings will be public as well.
Yeah, sure.
Obviously, you're a subcommittee of, of the council, so that'll be public as well, right, so.
If you want, sorry, you know, but, I mean, we always, we always have a section saying special committee reports, I mean, that, that would be something where when we talk in the committee.
Yeah.
That we can say, okay, either Brendan or I, since we're, it's like we're gonna be on there.
Can report.
I can report.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm an asset need.
Yeah, 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 no, that's fine. I just, I just don't want, because I think, I'm afraid of what will happen is we'll have two messages coming out.
Yeah, hopefully it's all facts, you know.
Well, whatever it is though, I, I want the facts run through the council before we put something out to the public and then it gets misinterpreted and you know how that goes. Once, once the information gets out there, it's very hard to pull it back. So that just.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fair. The, the thing is that as this thing evolves, so you'll want to gauge interest in, you know, if there's options, internal operations, outsourcing. Let the Y do the whole damn thing, how does that work, you know, all that kind of stuff, right? So, but you'll want to get some engagement back from the public and to be fair, this is your council meeting. So that's what I'm saying, we got to have these public meetings and.
Well, I mean.
However you want to run it.
I agree.
So periodically, like once a month, I think there should be a meeting between now and April with the public. This, this is what the committee has learned, you know, just so that the, the public can digest it and, you know, and we build on it, we build as we go, so that come referendum, you have a nice fact sheet, whatever you want to present.
Don't forget the two meetings we've had, we had twenty-five people and there were some of the same people, so we probably had maybe thirty total.
All right.
That's true.
Perhaps maybe Donna's idea of.
That's why you need it periodically and.
Doing it every single morning to kind of advocate.
Go to PTOs, we gotta, we gotta reach out, somehow you gotta allow this committee.
Think about it.
Or allow someone, maybe it's your council reps, you go to PTOs, you go to the Rotary, you, you go to businesses, you know, everybody that has something to do with this. We gotta reach out because you're not gonna get them otherwise, you know, I mean, that's, we, we gotta, we gotta go to them and be at their meetings and explain what we're trying to do and give them the updates. But again, just think about that and however you want it to run, it's, it's your deal, but I really do think public outreach, very important for all of what's learned by the subcommittee and the council, so.
If I may, I would strongly suggest that you put, take some of the out contingency and make sure that they have a secretary and that all the minutes have, you know, whether they go to the PTOs or to the Rotary or something, the minutes are kept and we'll get those out on the website if possible, but this way people constantly have know what's going on.
Thank you.
And it's a D, you know, this way it's not somebody from committee doing it, you gotta have, you gotta hire somebody. I don't know if Dana is available, but she's been very good about it and I continue to do the Zoom meetings if possible. So, and I, I think that's a good, because you can just go on YouTube and look at this stuff.
Right.
Couldn't, couldn't have funding come from the grant we got for the planning of this?
I, we can talk to finance about it. I don't think that that's a bad thing. So you can ask, go find some of the money we have that we can use it for secretaries.
It's funded already, I wonder if we'll have to check that, if that, it's out of, there's some money left in there, I'm sure, right? So, seven hundred fifty thousand, I don't think we spent that much yet. If we did, I'd like to know what, but I don't think we spent that much yet.
Maybe a tab even on our website here, town, that's specific to this project and we can.
Yeah, right now we have it under these, I like, and it is a, a, the concept. But we can definitely, we're right in the midst of advancing our web page, our website, Roche and I are meeting with them tomorrow.
That might be helpful for people to, you're kind of interested to follow what's going on and to see the future events, etc.
Right, so people have to go to the town website, you know, Facebook, you know, again, I would just suppose somehow we have a separate page dedicated to this project. At Parks and Rec, I, I proposed to our staff that, you know, we need our own webpage, senior center has their own webpage and they promoted it pretty well about these meetings. But they also know there's the July twentieth, hopefully there'll be a better turnout there for the seniors, but, you know, I, that's, it's dedicated. People don't go to the website and then, you know, I've heard complaints about, where do I find it? I didn't see it. I, I hit every little dot, you know, I don't know what they did. But we're gonna make it easy. If you want to get them the right information, you know, the information so that they can make an informed decision, so, anyway.
Thanks for all your time and efforts.
Thanks, Donna.
Putting this together.
With this and all the other projects you're involved in, you're.
Yeah, no.
So thank you.
I love it, this is good, this is, it's gonna be great. I get goosebumps, I said it before and I got it right now. Because this is a great project and it's gonna make a big quality of life change for our town. And thanks a lot.
Thank you, Donna, so much.
If I can, I would make this a best thing, that you do like some kind of board or something and put it right at the library. And everybody that comes into the library and leaves the library, Kim's right here, and so they know when those forums are going on. And you can, you get a lot of traffic in the library that may not go on the website or may not go on Facebook.
Right, I.
So that might be.
We actually talked to the library, I don't know if it was with you, but Barbara Gompats, we tried to even get it out to your newsletter, to try and get it out, but, yeah, but you're right.
I, I think that would be quite a section.
Yeah, we want to, you know, have like a little stand or something, you know, with the information. Uh, Rowan Fair, actually.
Talking about a sign too, right? Remember, maybe we talked about last time, maybe when there's a meeting about the community center, we can put a sign somewhere near Dairy Queen or just get a standard sign that's, you know, tonight or, I don't know. And, and how about this, how about the, the board, or the clock that I know we're trying to fix?
I mean, we, usually we maintain that as best we can until the new one comes, so.
Yeah.
There's something happening. If I get an email, I can have staff go out and make that change.
Oh, put, put something, yeah, okay.
Rowan Fair, someone suggested, it's a great one.
Yeah.
Sure, get a booth?
You know, I would hope we could have a table and just solely dedicated to this, you know, conceptual design, run the video or whatever. And the conceptual design, you know, he's amended a couple of times because he's gotten feedback, so the one we saw June thirtieth was pretty much the same, but it wasn't the same as six twenty-two and it's certainly not the same as the original video, so, you know, it's, it's evolving. That's what he's, he's been doing and rightly so. But anyway, Rowan Fair's a good one.
We'll figure out, we're gonna get it out there. But that is the age old problem. We talked about it right at the meeting the other night, the public, like, people say, well, I didn't see it. But they say, well, I, I, a lot of things, right?
Yeah, no, I, I realize.
They don't see it and it's out there, right? Roche and I talked about that too, you know, we have it, we have a town Facebook page, you know, we can have a separate one, but I, I, you know, whatever, we'll, we'll work on it, but I, I don't think it's, all falls on us, I think people, many people unfortunately don't pay attention until it's too late.
Right.
And, and they, they pay attention, you know, the referendum's here and they haven't been following it, now they want to know, much like we saw our budget vote, this last budget vote, very, you know, shameful turnout, apparently for people in our town out of what, thirteen thousand voters, whatever we have?
Less than a thousand.
Yeah, I mean, that's what happens unfortunately, but we can work on it, work on the communication.
Yeah.
It's always a big problem, but we'll do our best, no question. So, all right, great.
Okay, thank you very much, thanks.
Thanks. That all makes sense, Erosion? Everybody here?
Yes, it makes sense.
All right, we'll do the best we can.
All right, couple of other items, get some executive decisions at this time. You all have a copy of the blue collar contract that's signed. Reference the last time the agenda item was there, so if the signed contract is there.
Appreciate that, Erosion.
And in the future, when the, when it comes to council approval, we'll attach it to the agenda, so. I'll know about this later, but you have already the VNA director and the clinical director over there in a couple of weeks. So, sudden, I'm having initial conversations with the nurses. A lot of people have a lot of different ideas, but the most important thing is we have to have a clinical supervisor ASAP, jobs being posted. And I'm thinking on a temporary basis, there'll be a internal candidate, nurses who might be able to step up if not someone come outside. Because you probably know these VNA is heavily regulated in, you know, the, the when you give me the right one, the state statutes, it spells out very clearly what all the administrative, chief administrative or the director, type of qualifications they have, same for the clinical supervisor. Certain audits that have been completed on time, certain sign off, coding requirements, billing requirements, pool of, you know, all the care plans that are put together by nurses. So, this is just, if you're informed, I am also, it's a good time to think about the cost of the VNA and I'll, I'll talk to you later about that, maybe there's certain things that we can look at, but my immediate concern here is to make sure that we are compliant and can keep the VNA going until they come up with a Berlin structure, so, more to come on that, but this is just the, it's up.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Erosion. And, and I know it's a very difficult situation, we've dealt with for years early and actually it's nice to see these people come forward and they, most of their backgrounds seem to be in healthcare from what I saw and maybe they can help us too, you know, we're, we're, we're starting to look for whatever help we can get to solve this scenario right going forward, so. Okay, thanks. And too bad they're leaving because they were, they, yes, they were, they were great, so.
They were actually not looking, they were.
Appropriately approached, approached by climate enterprise that's similar to that, yeah.
So maybe qualified and if there's anything else that's all good, I can move on. That's all I have, but I, I want to, mostly to break this up to, perhaps to the ordinance committee, there was a recent request, I shared it with you, it's, I mean, about citizens asking for us to continue noise ordinance. We have one that is related to construction only. So I'll, I'll bring it up next time, do some research on it. There's some meeting minutes and other conversations that have taken place in the past and just have to go and dig it up and there were reasons as to why we didn't or do it. It's, partly it's a little bit difficult to enforce in terms of, you know, times and amount of decibels and what type of activity is actually, it's into a noise ordinance, so. So I'll get a more information, but just wanted to know, there's a request from a citizen too, for the council to consider that.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately, an unfortunate situation there and that turned by the noise from the neighbors, so. Thank you, Roche, and just the police, the pension discussion, I know we're, I'm just curious, we were waiting on information from our actuaries, right, with the.
Yeah, and maybe the same group get together, the, the police action.
Right, and the Rotary.
The finance, our finance folks themselves and the police union and the chief and the deputy.
Yep, so, work on that some more. Do, do we have, did they?
We should have it, so.
Okay. On the figures. Are, are they running figures on another option that we discussed, like 401K option with different.
We can do it.
Can they do that too?
Yeah.
Just so we have a couple of different plans we're discussing. So the ongoing, it's ongoing, we're just looking at something to retain our officers, obviously everybody is familiar with that, so we're trying to come up, come up with something the best we can for fair for the town and fair for our police officers to make sure we have the best package possible for them to, to retain them and them in the service of Berlin for a long time, so, we've been working on that. It's gonna, which is not, not, not easy today with any of this, but we're trying. Okay.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that, special community reports, I don't think there are any, right? No. We've got nothing, we'll work on some coming up, I know we got a freaking while here, so, we all might need a break soon. So, council communications, what do we have, anything? Anything? Council communications, once, twice, okay. Close that up, we can take a vote on our acceptance of minutes for our June fifteenth meeting. We'll do accept our June fifteenth meeting minutes as presented. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? Not all was in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? All right, so moved. And we will need a, we're gonna move into our executive session. Hello, Mr. DiNaprio, how we doing? Take a.
Hello.
Hey, a motion, I guess it's eight thirty on, on the nose here. Second on that?
Second there.
Right, and who do we got? We got Roche, Jeff.
Chuck.
Chuck, okay, right, who else? Is it this? Okay, we'll just take a, a moment. All is in favor, by the way, moving.
Hi.
Opposed? So just give us a minute to, so, yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna close this call, this is public.
Yes.
Then there's a calling number, we're gonna get Jeff and Chuck on that line. For the first item and the second item, they're gonna all hang up and call on a separate line, so I'll manage to speak in front of them, so that nobody is each driving. So that nobody is each dropping, you know, the conversation. All right, Jeff, there's a couple of more minutes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Break.